She's. Caroline's walking around.
I see, okay, well, let me start, I'll start over again, I guess. When I call the order, the Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the town council study committee. Let's see, I guess I'll go through the hybrid meeting stuff. Members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting must use their full name for Zoom access. I don't know if we have too many members of the public out there at the moment. If full names are not used, people will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. The town reserves the right to remove any member of the public from the meeting who doesn't use a full name or act inappropriately. We are using Zoom for this meeting and we're operating in a hybrid format with both in-person and Zoom attendees. Attendees will join in the listing mode, they can use your raise hand button if you wish to speak or ask a question. And I will do the best, my best to call on folks who have raised their hands. All questions should be directed through the chair. Confirming member access is a preliminary matter, this is Joe Grous, Chair of the Town Council Study Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Bo?
Yes.
Rachel?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Anything, anybody, no little members, no members out there, right?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly?
Hi.
Thank you. Curtis?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Tom?
Here.
Jill?
Hi.
Joe, present. Uh, there are no staff members. And I guess the anticipated speakers on the agenda, which are the, who are the folks from the Collins Center, so Anthony?
Who are you? Good to be here.
Uh, Mel? For the record, Mel is waving, and Patricia? Hi, okay, got that. Um, hey, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment and questions during the meeting. Uh, for this meeting, we are convening in a hybrid format with both Zoom and in-person participation. Um, but. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website, or will be, because some of the handouts are new. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the notes specify otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Uh, I will introduce the speakers and go through the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Or we can, I will have the members of the committee ask any questions and then allow members of the public to answer questions, ask questions after that. Uh, please remember to mute your, mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. I think that about does it. Um, okay, good afternoon, everybody, a couple of housekeeping. Issues, I guess, I have to ask for acceptance for the agenda, can I have a motion to accept the agenda? Curtis?
Second.
Bo?
Right.
Rachel?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Kelly? Curtis? Caroline?
Um, hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Joe, hi. Uh, the Town Council Study Committee meeting is being recorded. Um, has everyone had a chance to check out the minutes from April third? Yes, everybody seems okay. Have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move.
Second. Okay, I'll go the same way, Bo? Rachel?
I don't, I wasn't here, I don't know if I can vote.
Did you read the?
I read them, so I, they're fine to me.
That's good enough for me. Jeff?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Okay, Curtis? Caroline?
Tom?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Joe, hi. All right. Um, we've got the housekeeping business out of the way. Anthony, Mel, and Patricia, welcome to the meeting. We have, um, I think some work we're gonna do led by you today, so Anthony, it's best thing to turn it over to you, I think.
Yes, yes, so, um, let me give you a quick preview of the, of the work that we're gonna be doing. Uh, then I'm gonna do a, just a review of the documents that are in front of you, the members of the committee. Um, and then we'll get right into it. So, uh, just sort of the short agenda of our portion of the meeting is that we're going to finish up. Um, or, I say finish up, we're gonna continue and sort of get to a stopping point on the, um, problem statements that we discussed at the last meeting. I believe there may have been some members of the committee who were not there. Um, so, sort of gonna get that input from those persons on that, um, problem statement, and I'll explain that more when we get into it. Next, we have a presentation on the various forms of government. It's gonna look somewhat like, um, the presentation we gave before, but this presentation's gonna have some more in-depth information uh, on the different forms of government. You can get, you may have seen it, uh, before, when the materials were distributed. Um, and then, the last thing that we'll do, if we have time, is we're gonna circle back to the problem statement worksheet. And we've got, we'll have listed out some of the problems, and then we're gonna start to facilitate that discussion on how do the different forms of government, uh, impact, uh, addressing the problems that you've identified. And that may help this committee sort of think about what forms are appropriate to address the, um, the sort of problems that are identified. So, uh, if there are no other questions, I'll sort of jump right into it, and I'm gonna just share my screen very briefly, or quickly here. Let me find the right document.
Can everyone see this, I'm getting it sort of blurry.
You want to take the seat for?
No, no, I'm, I'll just listen carefully. No, seriously, I didn't.
Can you see my, can you, is everybody seeing my screen? They should be seeing the, a Word document?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so before I, I get into this, um, so on the left-hand side, hand side is, um, you know, at the top, we have the different forms of government. Nantucket is currently in an open town meeting form of government. So, uh, we start the last meeting having looked at, um, the minutes from, uh, your meeting, I believe it was in January, where the committee sort of listed out some of its, um, uh, the areas that I think needed to be addressed. Um, so we spent the last meeting sort of talking about those areas. And what I did, where I could, based on that conversation, I consolidated some of the problems that may have seemed similar in the conversation, put them under the same heading. And where I thought those were sort of new issues, um, they, they got their own sort of separate row. Uh, the other thing that you may notice is the plus signs, those are just, you know, if the particular item was mentioned by more than one person, that is sort of an indication of how many people talked about that particular issue. So, so that's sort of your, um, uh, how you would orient yourself to the sort of document as we formatted. And I explained this, uh, at the last meeting. You know, don't get too caught up in the form of this document or in the cells and the sheets of that nature. Uh, this is really a tool for discussion, um, so that the committee can sort of discuss amongst itself, you know, why it's doing this and what direction it wants to move in. Um, and, and so that's really its primary purpose. Um, and again, we're hoping that, uh, that you'll keep this, you'll be making your own notes here and there on it, um, so that you can sort of orient yourselves to discussion. And I don't have the best memory for who was here at the last meeting, so I, I guess I'd be curious to start with, uh, whomever was not here at the last meeting or anyone who did not have an opportunity to state what they felt could be the issues with the open town meeting form of government that you currently have. And, um, and that's where we are right now. So if you haven't had a chance to share your thoughts, um, and maybe we can go around and start with whoever wasn't here before. What are some of the issues or problems that you think maybe need to be addressed? And however they're addressed, that, that'll be a later decision, but what are the problems you see with your current form of government?
Joe, Rachel, and Jeff, right? Yeah, I wasn't physically here. I read the minutes and I watched the last meeting, I don't have anything new to add than what was said. I just was trying to just look at notes that we went through to make sure that everything in general from last meetings were addressed on there, but I don't have anything new to add from both of those last time. Well, the biggest things I, I can see on there right now, but. I think one of the, one of the other items might have been like the people who are attending town meeting might not be completely representative of our full community, and I, maybe that's under ten percent of voters, or no access for non-resident, I mean, I'm not even referring to them, but I, I, I think it's covered.
Is, is there any, um, if you were to, um, is there anything that, of these things listed, um, is there anything that sort of is, is higher in your mind than the rest?
Yes, all.
Uh, yeah, I mean, all of them are pretty important, um.
I mean, I, I think for me, one of the things that I, I thought could be added is kind of in that infrequent meeting box is, I, I appreciate the inability to get grants, but I, I think also what comes to that is, it doesn't, our meeting schedule doesn't allow, you know, if there are, are issues that come up or things that need to be addressed in an immediate nature, is it doesn't really allow for the legislature to participate in that. So if you have something that comes up, where, you know, let's just kind of look at a, a issue of the day, and I can't believe I'm gonna bring this up because it's an issue I dread, but, uh, we've obviously had a lot of issues with, with PFAS and water supply that comes up. And we're putting a lot of money towards municipal infrastructure for water and those things, but a lot of those things are acting in a reactive manner that the legislature isn't participating in. Uh, and I, I think that getting greater input or, you know, legislative input to some of that could be important. And that's something that with one meeting a year, there are things that need to get addressed through the year that don't ever make it to the legislature. Just for the fact that they, they don't have meetings.
Anthony, it also strikes me that, that the, uh, characteristics that are listed in the vertical boxes, I mean, I think we've talked a lot about lack of efficiency or that town meeting is kind of an inefficient, you know, way to operate in terms of, um, both, all the various bylaws and, you know, all the issues that, that might get, might be brought up at a town meeting, whereas I think the presumption is that, um, forums that meet more frequently, town council and, and city mayor, I guess, um, can sort of operate and respond to issues facing the town, um, you know, on a more continuous basis than, you know, than waiting for one or two town meetings a year.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that under infrequent meetings, inefficient decision-makings. And I see a hand raised. Go ahead. Da- Donna? You, Donna, you're muted.
Thank you, Anthony, it's Donna Martino. Um, obviously, non-voting taxpayers are at a disadvantage, so, and it's, you've already listed it, but it is very important to, um, that population on Nantucket, to have a better voice, a greater voice.
Anyone else, I don't, Kelly, I don't know if you were, I don't remember if you were at the last meeting and you had an opportunity to chime in.
Sorry, trying to unmute, uh, yeah, I was, I think mine, I emphasized just, um, more the kind of apathy and disengagement. So I think most of my things are covered. One thing that, one maybe additional row, I'm not sure if it's a row or column, um, and maybe some of you are already familiar with this. I've just been wondering, like, between all the different forms of government, what are the methodologies of voting? Between like electronic voting, mail-in ballots, like what are all the, what are all the outlets for voting between each, for each form of government? And I, that would be helpful for me to see and talk about.
I think we will get into that, and that might be a good segue if there, if there's, we don't need to spend a ton of time on this, I just wanna make sure that we sort of, you know, kind of, sort of close the circle on, on the problems. Um, again, feel free, this can be updated as we go through the course of this, um, uh, not just this meeting, but this whole process as, as you're sort of, uh, drafting a charter and, and moving in a direction. Um, but I think this may be a good segue to, uh, Mel and Pat, who are gonna lead us on a discussion of the different forms of government. Um, and this is a, against a Q and A, there's gonna be a presentation, but it's meant to be interactive. So I'm gonna pull up the slide, I'm gonna start sharing it, and then Melo.
Anthony, can I, can I add one thing? Sorry. Um, under voter preparation, um, I don't, sorry, I'm trying to, I think one of the other things I heard that was mentioned a lot in the last meeting was, um, with so many articles, it's also hard for even voters who are getting informed to understand what they're actually voting on or the impact. I would add that, because that's a, that's a big one, and I mean, sometimes people hyper-focus on the things that they know are big issues for them, but then they have other things that come up that maybe they're hearing for the first time and don't understand how they're voting or what the impact truly is. But I would also maybe not just voter preparation, but I think we've talked a lot as well about internal preparation. There's a lot that goes into planning for town meeting, making it assessable, getting the warrant printed, sent out, stuff like that. Um, the various committees, I know even Denise mentioned that she does a lot to get impact, um, feedback on the citizen articles for FinCom. So I think that there is a lot of preparation and committee work that goes into town meeting that maybe even a lot of voters and people don't realize. And then it might get, uh, minimized, I guess, at town meeting floor when people who are hearing issues at the same time are making comments or hearing bits and pieces without the full informational picture to vote, uh, in a well-informed way, I guess is the way you said it. So I don't know if that should be on there as well in some capacity.
No, that's, that's actually a very good one. And before we go on, I guess I'm curious, that's kind of a new one, I don't know if there, if, if, uh, anyone else wants to sort of chime in on that piece?
I would. Um, I, I would use the word confusion, that there, there are certain aspects of how the town meeting works, um, that also produce confusion, like when on the floor amendments, last minute, um, amendments and adjustments, which I know is part of our town meeting, and maybe you could even say it's like an art form of the town meeting, but, um, I, from what I gather talking to people, it's extremely frustrating, and they feel annoyed by it. And they, it makes them feel dumb when they're trying to figure it out at the last minute, and then if they're confused and don't know how to vote, which happened, uh, in our last special town meeting to a lot of people. I think it gives people a bad feeling about town meeting, and then it makes them not want to go. Or as my landscaper just said to me today, it's extremely painful to think about or to go to. And that's an old, old Nantucket family. You wanna add?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Just on the finance committee side, I mean, yeah, we have tons of meetings, and in recent years, I've seen something different. I'd say the last two years, that, from my experience, we're, we're getting people to bring articles forward, and they are registered voters, but they, they don't actually live here, you know, they don't live in the winter. So, um, they, they're new to the process, and they just think they wanna get this done, and then they don't know the process. So we end up spending a lot of time educating them about, you know, why the article maybe isn't in the right format, or, you know, uh, this isn't really the right place for you to bring that, and then that goes into other people as well. A lot of people do just use town meeting as a platform for them to get an issue out there, even though the article is, and I've mentioned it before, it's not, you know, it's not able to become law, so.
I think also that the organizational, the sort of the institution of legislature in an open town meeting form is lacking. I know we have a moderator, but we really, you know, if you can have more organizational structure, A, you would meet more often. And B, you'd have probably a speaker, and you'd have your own legal counsel. And you'd have the ability to form subcommittees and so forth, and so on. When legislation comes to town meeting, it would go through its own sub, subcommittees and a, and a better organized legislature. But again, it's a, since it's a small-town problem, you might not have the infrastructure or the people interested to address that issue, so you, you make a concession. But I think that's, you know, the, the, the organizational structure is lacking.
Um, it, this, this may be more just an idiosyncrasy of, of the Nantucket's town meeting, but I, I know that, um, I've heard John Giorgio tell the story many times, um, back from when I was in the FinCom, but, um, that Nantucket is pretty unusual, and that our, our warrant tends to have a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty articles year in and year out. Um, and, um, a lot of that is just driven by citizens' articles that, you know, go in all sorts of different directions. Now, I would admit, that's probably something that's a lot of people on the island like, that they feel that that indicates, you know, an ability to be involved in the, the affective outcomes, but, um, certainly one of the things that makes the Nantucket Town Meeting inefficient is we just have a huge number of articles compared to most towns and, and, um, on, on the, uh, in the Commonwealth.
Um, and a third of them are zoning, which tie us up and could be handled in a separate meeting, as other communities do.
Any other? I, I was gonna, I was, Anthony, I was gonna cheat and, and, um, you know, I think we've come up with some good, good ideas here, good, good comments, uh, uh, that you're filling in. You guys are the experts, I, I, I think I'd like to put, you know, the three of you a little bit on the spot. Are we missing anything in terms of, uh, either critical issues that people like about town meeting or more to the point of what we're talking about now? You know, issues that are sort of common, um, concerns or, or issues that tend to drive people to look at their form of government and consider otherwise?
Uh, I'll let Mel and Pat chime in. I, 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 I think that, for the most part, a lot of what you've, uh, the committee has sort of listed here is, is things that we've heard before, um, for this form of government. Um, and again, you know, I, 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 I sort of like to sort of drive the point home is that, um, every forum has its sort of pros and cons to give and take, and it depends on, on what your, um, you know, what your outcomes are. So if, if you've identified something as an issue, whereas, uh, another community might say, um, uh, for example, um, well, I guess I've never heard somebody say the number of, of warrants are, are a good thing, uh, if there are a lot of them. But, you know, just pick an item and say that some, for some form or another, some person might like it, um, so, so they vary. But I mean, these are very common issues, uh, that we've heard across from other communities. Pat, Mel?
Um, I, I would say that, uh, you're very comprehensive on the legislative side. As Anthony said, we've heard these before, this is, these are fundamental issues with an open town meeting, or even in some cases, a representative town meeting. I was curious if you had any other underlying concerns about form of government, whether it's on the executive side or on the, um, you know, on commi-, on committees or whatever, um, else is out there other than legislative, the town meeting process, if you have anything else, they're often also addressed in a charter process.
Anybody can?
Well, I'll, I'll just comment again, um, I look at Barnstable and their organizational structure, and they have planning, zoning, they have all the subcommittees that they need under the structure of a town council. So, uh, I think you can accommodate those things, and, um, they do it very well. I, they, they're, it's a model that I look at, and then everything goes from there.
Anyone else? Tom? Joe? I, you know, I, I think Mel, just, certainly in terms of this committee and thinking it probably a little more for myself than, than my colleagues here, um, I, I don't think any of us came into this particular committee meeting thinking, oh gee, you know, there's a problem with the town manager or there's a problem with the planning board or the finance committee or something. I, I think most of those components of town government, you know, I'm sure there are people in town that don't like them, but I mean, I, I don't think that they're, you know, super, um, you know, hot, hot topics or something.
One of them?
I'm sorry?
Was the appointing authority of some, like, we, we talked a little bit about that, but I don't know if that would change in different forms.
Well, it, it strikes me, is it, once, once we get to the stage of discussing a town charter, whether it's to keep the one we got or, because we haven't made that. But I, I think we're, certainly we'll have discussions about, gee, is the planning board, is the planning board gonna be structured the same way? In, you know, af- afterwards as opposed to before, right?
And, and I, I do wanna get Donna and Kelly, and that they've had their hand up, but before, I just wanted to, so one of the things we did here earlier on during the last meeting was, y'all got here skepticism of the administration, um, uh, lack of transparency. Um, so, so that, to the extent that we're talking about the executive branch, it hasn't been something, it hasn't been a huge thing, but it's something that did come up in some of our previous conversations. So, so Donna, I think Donna had her hand up, and then Kelly.
I did, thank you, Anthony. Um, yeah, going back to the idea, are there things that we're missing, either, um, about the current form of government that we have, the ATMs? Um, on a positive note, or things that should be improved that maybe we haven't touched on? Since you have so much experience in this, could you, is there anything else that we've missed? Any other areas that we should add to what you've got going on here with the boxes? Anything else?
I, I don't have anything to add, um, other than to say that, um, you have a charter already. Um, a lot of open town meeting forms of government towns do not have charters. So I think you've already had an opportunity to, uh, look at all these aspects of your, of your government and organize them and write them down. So I think you're better off than most, and if, if you're focused on the legislative, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that there is nothing else we're missing.
Yeah, and, and.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Anthony, I was just pointing at, uh, I think Kelly's been waiting, so.
And Joe.
And then Jeff.
Oh, Kelly, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, I think to Mel's question, um, and it's not so much that I'm concerned with this for the other bodies of government, it's just something I'm concerned with for all the bodies of government, and it's representation. And I know that even in our town meeting, I think representation is obviously an issue, but if there kind of is a consolidated form of representation, how do we ensure that the constituents or the voter or the voting populace still feel represented and do other forms? Embolden that more, or is that harder to achieve?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, if, if that was a question, I would say, um, in sort of going back to a little bit to Donna's question, I mean, in terms of things that we hear, uh, you kind of touched on it, um, communities, particularly with the open town meeting form of government or even representative town meeting, there can be questions about, do we have too many committees with overlapping responsibilities? Uh, is there, uh, in terms of the executive branch, uh, do they have the ability to make the decisions, um, both administratively internally? Um, think about employee discipline, think about, you know, um, even policy decisions. Do we, do they have the authority and the means to, um, effectively do their jobs? So those are, I mean, you've covered the executive branch, branch, I'm sorry, the legislative branch very thoroughly in, in some of your comments. So there's nothing I think that we add. The biggest, uh, positive that people talk about in terms of open town meeting particularly is that anyone who, you know, is a resident of the community is automatically part of the legislative branch. One of the counterbalance to that, especially as communities get larger and have larger populations, are, how do we explain to everyone what it means that you're not going to vote in an election the way you think about, when you think about democracy usually in the United States? But you're actually a legislator spending, uh, at least one or two days a year, um, you know, making legislative decisions. Um, what that means in terms of your time, in terms of the, um, the investment to understand the issues, your ability to put issues before the body, you know, those, so, so those types of things. Uh, and again, it's, it's a given to take, it's not necessarily a good or bad, it's, is this appropriate for where we are now in terms of our size, our complexity, the things that we're trying to accomplish, um, things of that nature.
Uh, I think Jeff's next.
Yeah, I, I think back to Mel's question a little bit, um, just kind of two quick points, I, I, I think part of what's there that happens over time here and, and to the executive, I think because our meetings are so infrequent, that the community backs kind of the executive or other regulatory boards into acting as the legislature from time to time because of that function of time, right? Things need to be addressed quickly and responsibly, and, you know, I, I think those places do an admirable job in doing that, but I don't necessarily think that that's always the way it, it could be or should be, where we're asking, you know, legislative decisions to be made by the executive branch. And I think with that too, comes, I don't think people necessarily understand how each part of the system is accountable to the other part, right? Is how town meeting performs that check and balance on the executive and vice versa for how those two interact. And I know that the simple answer is to always say. The executive and vice versa, for how those two interact, and I know that the simple answer is to always say. If you don't like it, you don't have to to vote for somebody. But there are things in the interim, right, someone may be doing a good job. If the majority of people disagree with the singular decision. What's the mechanism to to work to deal with that, I think people need to understand that. Better or know what options are available to them for. That system of accountability to be in place, because I think that leads to. To better governance.
First, I I just want to follow up on Donna's comment about. The non-resident taxpayers. As a large uh, part of the constituency, but. In addition, I would remind us that we have. People here who I guess we call underserved, people who live here. But can't go to town meeting because they're not citizens and registered voters, but they could go to a town council and speak as they can in Barnston. So there's two underserved communities of constituencies.
Well. Uh, just to rip off Jeff air. The. Separation of powers in. The open town meeting system, you, when you're a small town, don't have the infrastructure organizational ability to form a legis- like. Through legislative body. You're going to rely on the select board and that's, that's kind of what we have been doing. But as a town grows, you can have a better. You know, organizational. Structure around that, and then you get true separation of powers, but you have to build out the legislature. To such a degree where you have that, the question is really. Is it feasible to do that? Is it feasible to have an organized legislature within a town meeting structure? You could do it through a representative form. But, I mean, there's, there's trade offs there, so I, I would say that. Again, going back to Jeff. You need the. You need to have a, a clear delineation of the, of the different bodies. For them to work concurrently, and again, the, the, the constraints of. Or the natural constraints of. The legislation legislative body and the. Executive body are that they are doing things. To function together. They're enacting laws and then they're writing policy, and if the two things are. Incongruent, they don't work, then, then you. Then you end up with one body making more laws that are perhaps not feasible. So. That's my point, and.
All right, Anthony, I think we've.
Then did enough.
I think we vented, yes, that's a good point, um, let me turn it back to you guys.
Oh, no, that was, that was really, it's a good discussion, um. Mel and uh, Pat, I'm gonna start up the slideshow and you guys can take it from there.
Thank you, Anthony, um, I'm gonna go through the first set of slides and then um. Pat Lloyd will, will follow up with the remaining ones, and then we'll get into uh, back into the the matrix. Discussion, but we thought it was important again for you to have some context about form of government in Massachusetts. And we're going to talk about each form. Uh, so that will help you um, identify uh, how some of these problems would. Be um, addressed in these different forms, and it also. I think addresses um, your, your expectation from the select board that you would be studying these other forms of government. Which you have, but we're going to go through them um, once again, so. Um, uh, there, there's really. Uh, we call it four basic forms of government in Massachusetts, but it really breaks down to two. Forms of government, you're either a town. Or as the, as what the state calls a city. Uh, even though you might be called yourself a town. If you have a council form of government, you have a city form of government, if you have town meeting, you have a town form of government. But I think that's very simplistic and frankly, a little confusing. For a lot of folks, because there are a lot of towns. That have city forms of government, they call themselves towns, they have town councils. Um, town managers as opposed to city councils and city managers. So I think it's really important that you know, uh, that uh, a city. Uh, can be a misnomer, you have town meeting forms of government and you have. Council forms of government, and that's how I like to refer to them as. Within the town, you have these two uh, types of of bodies in the legislature. Open town meeting and representative town meeting. In towns, you always have a board of selectmen or select board as we're now calling them. Now you move over to the so-called city form or council form, and you have two of uh, variations there as well. And they deal with both of the executives, the executive level in that, in that case, it's either a mayor who is the executive. An elected mayor or an appointed manager. So um, just to to look at the uh, forms of government, why don't we go to the next slide, I think it will, it'll help um, demonstrate them. So um, you'll, you'll see on the left slide, um, that by and large, uh, you know, most towns in Massachusetts, most municipalities in Massachusetts. Are actually open town meetings, seventy-four percent of them, and I think that's has to do a lot with their population. Um, uh, communities below six thousand um, have no choice, they must be an open town meeting. And uh, the fact that governments have been created this way is hard to change, and so uh, you'll, you'll, you'll see that um. Even uh, adding, adding to the representative town meeting is another nine percent, so. Well, well, well over eighty percent of of government uh, uh, forms of government in Massachusetts are town meeting. And then you have the uh, council forms which make up seventeen percent. Uh, four, four percent being a council manager or, you know, yeah, council manager and then thirteen percent being the cities. Now, you'll see in on the right side, uh, that's very different when you actually distribute the people who live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, most of the people are living, um. Uh, well, uh, they, they are in the town form of government, but, but now there's a third of the people who are living in that, a third of the people. Are at the open town meeting, whereas um. You know, uh, most of the people are living in a big city with a mayor council, so it's not surprising you have Boston, Worcester, uh, excuse me, Boston. And um, Springfield and and some of those, uh, Fall River, many of those other cities, that's where you see the distribution of people in those, in those places. So why don't we move down to the next slide? Um, so let's talk about representative town meeting, um, you know a lot about open town meeting, frankly, representative town meeting is not a lot, lot different than the open town meeting. Um, the bait, the fundamental difference is, uh, it's as the same applies, it's representative, it's not every voter of the town is eligible. Uh, it's a representative of that group. And the state has a system whereby you uh, divide your community into uh, precincts. Uh, it's a somewhat of a mathematical formula, some of them are formulaic type of thing. But um, you create precincts and then you decide how many members uh, from those precincts will be elected to the representative town meeting body. Um, there's a wide variation of sizes of representative town meetings in Massachusetts, you have from a. Usually it's, it's, you know, hundred to two hundred fifty, uh, but you'll see uh, the slide there, Saugus has one with only fifty-five members and Fairhaven. Is a town with over four hundred uh, town meeting members. Uh, like to open town meeting, the representative town meeting is run by. An elected moderator and there is a warrant. That the select board adopt and uh, is becomes the agenda for the town meeting. Um, yeah, yes.
Uh, I I, to go back to the previous bullet, but. Can you talk a little bit or explain how does, how do you develop the number of elected representatives and a representative organization? I I thought I, I thought that there was like, um. I found something on the internet that said the maximum was two hundred and forty or something, so I was struck by Fairhaven, which is. Is not a very populous town having four hundred, so um. Is it a formula, is it a, is it the preference of the town, is it, um, what, what is it?
I I believe, I believe it is, Joe, I believe uh, the town can decide that the, the overall um, size. Um, I'll have to get into the details about, uh, you know, the legal realities of that. I think once you decide the size, then you decide how, uh, you know, it's going to be um. Uh, divided up by precinct, which is the sort of the formulaic part of it. But the size of the body, I believe, is the discretion of the community and we'll get back to you on that to confirm.
Okay.
But do you also have to, is there a formula for the number of precincts in a town?
So, uh, I, oh, go on, Mel, sorry.
No, you go, Anthony, this not my, really my greatest area of expertise.
Um, so, so forgive me if I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I believe that there's a minimum number of precinct, pre- member, I'm sorry, a minimum number of inhabitants voters and. That make up a precinct, it's, I believe it's four thousand, don't sort of quote me on that, but it's somewhere around there. That's the smallest sized precincts you can have, um, and then precincts are geographically consistent and contiguous and you. Uh, and so, so, you know, as you map out that number of people, that would be a precinct and and um, that's something. Um, there, there's particular law, state law on how you do that, usually it's, or not usually, it's through the. Uh, under your current form, it would be through the select board, um, using census data, and then they would um, uh, sort of. Formulate the physical boundaries of that, Pat, if you had, if you want to correct me if I, if I misstated anything there.
I don't, um, I do think though, it's, it's a complicated, um. It's not, it's actually not that complicated, but we, we don't want to. We don't, we, we would want to look into that further, I, I think four thousand is high on the number in each, but I'm not sure about that. Um, oftentimes, um. You, every, you know, every ten years with a census, you're all, um, the state is already looking at developing. Um, you know, congressional districts, et cetera, so the same kind of data is in place, there are also. Um, very specific rules on how lines can be drawn and how, um. So that's something that's really, we can really get into more when, if it comes down to doing that, we can, you know, pull together a separate presentation on that if you need us to.
Well, you need to, because if you're looking at four thousand, um. Then we could have four precincts in there, so.
Yeah, I.
But, but I.
I'm fairly certain four thousand isn't the, isn't the number, that may be the state number, but um. You know, but we'll take a look at that. We can definitely give you more information on that.
It sounds like it's, it's fair to say though that. The, creating the number of precincts and then figuring out the number of representatives is, is. Both complicated and it sounds like a sort of arcane, so it's um, it's, it's not. Sort of a straightforward, you've got eighteen thousand people and therefore you have fifty representatives, it's like it's some other. Method.
Yeah, I, I, I'm pretty sure Mel's correct, you did, you can determine, like, if we're strictly sticking to representative town meeting. You would pick the number of representatives, um, that would represent, uh, that would make up your representative body. Um, this body would not be drawing the precincts, that would not be under the provisions of the charter committee that. The, the laws were specified who would do that, um, what you would do is you would decide, here's how many people we want to be the representative, the representative body.
Okay.
Usually in the transition provisions of any charter, there's a creation of um, a committee that works on the precincts. And it often involves the inclusion of the town clerk, um, because the town clerk is involved when lines are drawn for federal and state. Um, federal and state districts as well. Um, the, there, there, you know, it's similar in that each precinct has to have the same number of people. Um, there's limitations on how the lines are divided so that you don't have. You know, little neighborhoods being circled and pulled into precincts that aren't logical geographic representations. So there is, you know, it's definitely something that takes a little thought, I'm pretty sure, um, the number isn't four thousand, because I, just knowing the. Knowing the towns that are out there and how many they have, it's probably, it's probably less than that. Um, but we'll take a look at that, um, it's usually, like I said, it's not something you would have to draw, although we can talk about numbers. Um, when you talk about numbers, you're going to want to look at. Who shows up for open town meetings? How, you know, how many of your elected positions are already contested? Um, you want to get a feeling for what is realistically a number that can be supported by the town? If you have representatives at the town meeting, um, so, you know, we could, we, it's very individualized and we can take a look at that.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Yeah, so you raised a couple of points here and I can see where we can have a. That we get to set our numbers, but. You're saying we have to have precincts?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it has to be, and they have to represent their precinct, these can't be at large. I mean, you do realize that we would only have one big gerrymandered map, right, you will never get enough people in Scotland. To, to have enough people to represent the number of people in Mid Island. This, this is, you're talking about gerrymandering, I think, I mean, the map is only going with gerrymandering.
But a number of charters that I've looked at have like five at large. And uh, then seven or eight precincts, so.
You're talking about, you, you were talking about councils, now we're talking about representative town meeting right now. And to my knowledge, uh, you have to have precincts for representative town meeting, they cannot be selected at large, but I. Again, I.
Well, why don't I, why, why don't we get, why, Mel, why don't we let you get moving here, I think we sort of dug into this a little deeper than we need to.
Sure.
Let me just read you the sentence that.
Sure.
Okay, uh, MGL, chapter forty-three A, section three, upon adoption of a for said, of such standard form of representative town meeting. Government by a town, its selectmen shall. Forthwith divide the territory thereof into voting precincts, each of which shall be plainly designated and shall contain not less than four hundred registered voters.
There you go.
Frank?
Not blessed.
Have a good time in Scotland.
But it could be more. You could still have three.
But you don't need four thousand, you only need four hundred.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Franklin Town Council is not, it's all at large.
Yeah, we were just saying.
Representative, I'm just saying that. Town council, you don't need. To have. Right now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into town council just in a moment, so we're gonna, let's wrap up representative.
Yeah, let, let, let you get going, Mel, sorry.
Yeah.
We kind of went down a rabbit hole that one.
That's okay, so, uh, you know, uh, we said open and representative town meeting are, are, are similar. But uh, you know, the form of, for the representative town meeting is, is, is the difference, you still have. Select board, you still have a town moderator, you still have a finance committee, those are very important and. Fundamental features of a town meeting form of government. You know, those are the basics, and then you find out, you know, how does your actual government work and what, what Nantucket has done, as well as many. Town meeting form of government, you've created charter, and so you've filled in a lot of blanks, and so you're, you know, you have a good charter uh, for a town meeting form of government. Um, next is the open town meeting, which I don't have to say a whole lot about because you already are one of those. Um, I guess the, the most important point is that, um, uh. You're required to meet annually, uh, all registered voters are eligible to participate, you still have the moderator, the select board. Uh, finance committee, um, and as mentioned before, um, any talent is less than six thousand, it's no choice, you must be. An open town meeting, but uh, uh, when you're, when you're twelve thousand or more. Uh, or when you're six thousand or more, you can decide to have a representative town meeting, and when you're twelve thousand or more. Uh, you can for, you can decide to have a council form of government, and that's what we're going to get into right now, talk, talk a little bit about the council. Um. And I will, yes.
Yes, uh, are, are representative and open town meetings, is it, the, the question is, how many town meetings per year are you allowed to have or? Obviously, you're supposed to have at least one, um, I'm sort of curious whether, does anybody have town meeting forms that actually? You know, has a monthly town, I don't, you know. Monthly town meetings or something, there's, there's, it's always.
Well, you can, you can, you can call as many special town meetings as you want. Uh, under this form of government, so you could have one every month if you, if you wanted to. Um, you have to have the one, the annual meeting, and some charters. Require two annual meetings, one in the spring and one in the fall, but no, there, there, you can have as many as special town meetings as you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry, we almost called one two weeks ago.
Yeah, sound like.
Well, dangerous for us.
So hanging over redstone?
Well.
And then one in June, and then another one October.
In theory, special town meeting is always hanging over your head, because it doesn't. I, I was, I was, I was curious just because in considering the other forms that are a more continuous. Sort of governed and process. Can you have open town or representative town meetings? You know, sort of can, I don't know, modified so that you have lots of town meetings and and sort of, you know. Move them closer to being the other forms, and it. Sounds like you could, you just wouldn't.
But you gotta post the warrant months in advance.
I mean, all, all that administrative, so, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would say that special, uh, representative town meetings do tend to meet more frequently. Than open town meetings, but I think it's more of a function of just the logistics and, and process of getting them together. Um, so, uh, let's, let's go briefly to the city mayor forum, because you know, I'm not sure that that's really one of those that you're, 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 you're thinking about. But um, a, a council forum can have the, uh, the executive, uh, being elected, and that's a mayor. And in that case, uh, usually the mayor is elected at, well, they're always elected at large for two or four years. And they are the chief executive of the community. And generally speaking, they appoint most if not everyone. And they submit the budget like an executive does. Um, they often have veto power over certain council, um, actions. So when the council adopts an ordinance. Or, or, or something else, uh, often the mayor, uh, has the power of veto. Um, the mayor in um, many cases is, is a, a member of the school committee. Or, or even the chair of the school committee in, in larger cities. The council is pretty much the same as, as it would be in either form of the, uh, uh, either manager or mayor. Nine to fifteen mayors, uh, excuse me, nine to fifteen members, uh, smallest we know of is seven, and the largest is twenty-four. And also they're elected two or four years. And they meet at least once a month, probably twice a month is more likely, and they sometimes have committees that meet. Um, they usually have very limited appointment power. So, uh, all of the appointment and executive authority is usually limited to the mayor. And um, we, we asked earlier about, you know, whether, um, either councillors are elected at large. Or by, um, ward, which is another word for precinct. And it's a mix, and we've seen everything. Um, we've seen some all at large, some all by, uh, by district. And often a mix of, of that. So, um, it's really your choice. Uh, and then the council is the legislative body, so they approve or reject the budget. Uh, any other que, any questions on this before I move to the, uh, manager, council manager forum?
Is, i- i- is it, are, are mayors considered to be sort of more powerful executives than town managers? Is, is the, is that, you know, if you called both?
Yeah, definitely, uh, they're elected at large, so they have, they have that mandate from the, uh, elected, uh, from the residents. Of the community, they can, uh, they can veto, um, a council action. It's, it's a more, it's a much more political type of environment. Whereas you'll see the council manager is a little bit more collaborative. Because it's the council that appoints the manager and evaluates the manager and can remove the manager. So clearly the mayor has a lot more authority, uh, legal and political in, uh, in communities with councils.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, actually, uh, let's go, so, um, on the man, council manager. So, um, again, the town manager is the chief executive. Uh, whereas in towns, a town manager, your town manager shares authority with the select board, with the elected select board. In the council manager form, or the council forum, there are no select boards. So it's really, it's the executive and the legislative. So often the, whether it's the mayor or the town manager, they are the chief executive officer as opposed to a chief administrative type of an officer. They are appointed by the town council and they manage all the day-to-day operations of the town. Um, they appoint people and they submit the budget to the town council, just like an executive. Um, count, council are always is, uh, you know, they're usually, uh, again, whether it's a mayor or, or a, a manager forum. Nine to fifteen members, uh, they're elected, uh, usually every couple of years. They appoint the town manager and sometimes they will appoint other, other officials. Uh, sometimes it's the town council, meaning the lawyer, the legal counsel, the auditor, or the town clerk. Um, sometimes they don't appoint anyone else other than the town manager. And you'll, you, you, you have seen maybe a, a working, um, spreadsheet that we've created. Um, that was in your packet, that looks at a lot of different forms of government and shows how each of them are, 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 uh, are, are created. In this case, the council president sometimes sits on the school committee, but I would say that that's not prevalent. But you can create that, um, that situation. So, um, those are the forms, uh, that I wanted to go over. Pat is going to talk a little bit more about some details about. Uh, how those work and some of the issues around, uh, creating a charter, uh, for those type of forms. So why don't I move on to you, Pat?
Thank you. Um, what I want to talk about is the. Is the overall thought process that you will go through if you choose to change form of governments. And that is that there's no one size fits all. Uh, there are a lot of nuances. Uh, you will have the option to choose somewhat cafeteria style, how you want to create, um, a new government. If you, you know, so a lot of this, I'm, I'm going to talk about kind of being geared toward if you choose to move ahead. With a council manager form of government. Uh, what are the options available to you? Um, first of all, as Mel discussed. Uh, even though in general, if there's a town meeting, it's a town meeting form of government. And technically, if there's a town, if there's a council, it's a city form of government. If you could go back to the last slide, that would be great. Thank you. Um, so tech, you, you can call yourself a town. If you want to continue to call yourself a town, even if there is a city, even if legally you would be known as a city. Some cities, um, three of them actually use the term mayor for the president of the city council. In those cases, the president of the city council is given a little additional authority as the, um, head of state. In, in, you know, de facto for the town. In this case, when you call this person a mayor, they're not the chief executive, they're really the council president. As, as we mentioned, one town renamed its Board of Selectmen a town council. So, um, when you're looking at comparing different charters in different towns and cities. Um, you have to understand there's, there's a little bit, a little more going on behind the scenes. Um, the population doesn't necessarily determine the form of government. Um, as Mel knows, towns. Towns can be as large as Brookline, which is sixty-three thousand, or at least at the time of this slide, had sixty-three thousand, um, people living, residents living there. There are a few handful of cities that still have planned form of govern, plans form of governments. I think it's been about a hundred years ago, um, the legislature said, if you want to become a city, you have to fall under these certain form of governments. However, these templates are no longer available and you really do have the option to create the form of government that best serves the town. Next, next slide, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, just to understand, um, to compare these across the board. Um, in the legislative, the legislative branch for open town meeting, um, all registered voters who appear create the legislative branch. Um, representative town meeting, um, the elected, the elected body is. The representatives that are elected create the legislative branch. In the council manager form, um, the town council is the elect, is the legislative branch. Sometimes what is misunderstood going through this process is that. The Board of Selectmen or the Select Board does not evolve into a town council. Really, the, it's the town meeting that's involving into the town council. That's the legislative branch going forward. The chief executive, um, is the elected body, the select board in the town meeting form. Um, in a council manager form, the chief executive is appointed and in council mayor, it's an elected. Um, under all of these forms of government, the school committee remains the same. It's an elected body. Um, I think there's, there's one exception, um, where it, in a city that has an appointed body. But in general, school committees will remain elected. Um, and we can talk more about, and a choice can be made. Um, in the elected school committee, do we want the council president or the council chair to serve on the committee, on the school committee? Um, boards and committees tend to change. Um, in town meeting forums. There's a mix of elected and appointed. Um, many towns have quite a few elected boards. In general, across all towns, um, that is evolving into more appointed boards. Than elected boards, simply because of the nature of the legal requirements and the experience. And, um, qualifications necessary to serve on boards. That with the new legal requirements going forward, um, you want to make sure that you have, you know, somebody on your board. Perhaps who is an expert in, you know, on, for example. Um, let's just say a planning board, you may want to make sure that specific, um, needs for your town are met. Through an appointment process, um, but we will talk, we will absolutely talk more of that. We have an entire, um. We joke, we have a spreadsheet for that where you can discuss whether it makes more sense to have appointed or elected. But in general, in town meeting, there's more elected boards, um, under council manager.
Sorry, for you, for you, go on. I think there was a hand up, so I just.
Thank you, I.
I just had a quick comment if I may, because I know we're, um, it's very obvious when you look at the legislative branch. That all registered voters who appear, that's very arbitrary. It's a very arbitrary way to run a government and to vote on warrants. Rather than folks who are elected and, and work on things and so forth. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
No, that's an excellent point. Um, and when we, when we finish up and we start talking about ways to address some of the problems that you're having. We can talk about, um, wh- wh- when you're, when you're thinking about how educated are the, uh, members who are showing up? Or how much information do they have and, and, um, are they getting what they need to make their accurate votes? That's, that's a, one of the points that we'll talk about. So, once there's a change to a council manager or council mayor form of government. Nearly all boards are appointed by the chief executive, which would be under council manager, the town manager, under council mayor. That would be the mayor. Um, oftentimes the appointments are made with the approval of the town council. So even though the chief executive chooses, there's often a ratification process. So there's input from both branches of government. There are some towns choose to have some, like, some boards remain elected. Um, the school board is almost always, continues to be elected. The, the library board of trustees often remains elected, but you know, not always. And we will be able to, you know, give you some more information on that when you're making those decisions. Um, next slide. Um, the budget process is a little bit different under these forms of governments. And this is, I'm not going to go through all of them, but just to give you a broad overview. Town meeting, whether it's open or, or representative, very much follows the same pattern. The, the budgets created often by the town manager or the select board with the, with the input of FinCom. And, um, as, and the budget review process is, goes through the select board, through FinCom. Um, the presentation is made at town meeting and town meeting ultimately, um, debates and approves the budget. Uh, in the, in the council manager form of government, it's usually the town manager who gets input. From the town council about priorities and, um, proposes the budget. Um, it's presented by the town manager to the council for the council's approval. Similarly, the mayor is the one moving the budget forward in the council mayor form of government. So it's, it's, it's a different process. But, you know, ultimately, it's the council who's approving the budget rather than town meeting, and that's its legislative function. Next slide would be great. Okay, some trends that we've noticed, um, in the last few years. Um, every few years, a town changes to a city form. It's, it's, there's not. A, there's definitely movement over time to a city form of government. Given the fact that many towns can't meet the population requirement, um, it happens occasionally. However, as far as we know of, the, there's no town that's transitioned from town to city and then chose to go back to a town form. Um, for what it's worth, um, they've made the decision and they've moved forward with it. No, no municipality has adopted a representative town meeting form since Chelmsford. I believe one town, I, um, has gone back, I think it was Lee, who, um, lost the, lost its population. So it went back down under six thousand and went back to, um, an open meeting from a representative form. There are thirty-two representative town meetings, which is down from forty-eight. And most of those have, and all of those have evolved into, into, um, what we call city, but really a town council form of government. Um, within the town form, um, as I mentioned, there's a trend towards the reduction of elected positions. And giving a centralization of authority under the town administrator, professional manager. And as we mentioned, the Massachusetts constitution restricts the forms of government available to, um, town, to. You know, the hundred and ninety towns that have populations under twelve thousand, so those will continue to be towns.
Say, Pat?
Yes.
Quick question on that, on that, um, the, the number where it said, you said the representative town meeting, it was forty-eight, now it's thirty-two. So that's a decline of sixteen over whatever the timeframe, oh, there is. Okay, so, and did I hear you right, that those sixteen towns that were, were representative town meetings converted to city? One of the city forms, presumably town council.
Yes, there was one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Or, or did, or did some of them shrink below six thousand and just go back to being open town meeting?
There was just one, and I actually don't think it's in these numbers because it just happened in a cou, a couple of years ago. But yes, there was just one that we're aware of that shrank back down and, um, went back to a, um, went back to an open town meeting. It, there, there's none that we are aware of that made a conscious choice and said, no, representative is not for me. We want to go back to open town meeting.
So the, the, the direction seems to be towards, um. City, town, county, council type forms more so than people, and unless they have to stay because of size, so.
Right, and oftentimes it just reflects a growth in population. Um, they've reached the threshold number, um, where they can make that choice. Um, it also represents a growth in complexity and a need to respond more quickly. Um, to, you know, certain, you know, you know, certain challenges in the town. But, you know, it's, it's slow process because many, because as I, I mentioned. There's a hundred and ninety cities and towns that have fewer than twelve thousand and cannot make that switch.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, next slide. Thank you. Okay, just. We put together this slide, uh, just to say some of the strengths. These are commonly noted strengths and weaknesses of each form in government. I think that you have had a lot of additional inputs. So, you know, feel free, I'd love to answer your questions. On, on my screen. The town committee screen is so small that I can't see you waving, so feel free to just stop me and interrupt. But, um, you've had a lot of input into this, but this is just our general, large, high-up overview. Look at some of the strengths and weaknesses. For example, open town meeting, as you've all discussed. The direct democracy and hearing every voice, um, as we should say, every voter voice. It, you know, that is one of the largest strengths and that's what's been keeping open town meetings going. Um, some of the weaknesses are that all voices can be heard if you're available during the meeting. There's, there, um, and the non-continuous nature of town meeting and the infrequency of meeting. Of the legislative body does create inefficiencies. So, in other words. There are people who cannot make it to a town, either through, because of their jobs, because of their need for childcare, for a number of reasons. Um, some towns are, you know, rising to the challenge of trying to get more people at town meeting. Um, but it, it does continue to be a problem, um, for all towns and not just yours. And also the fact that the general relative infrequent, infrequent meeting of town, of the legislative body. Means that it's hard sometimes to make decisions between meetings. Um, representative town meeting, their strengths are that. It's a, it's a large enough. it's a, it's a large enough legislative body that it provides broad representation from all of the precincts. Having the select board also allows for a multiple member body as the head of the executive. So there's several voices in the executive, just like an open town meeting, but there's also a large number of representatives in the legislative body. It's larger than town council. Some of the weaknesses is that sometimes it's just hard to get people to run for representative town meeting. Sometimes the seats are uncontested, they're not filled. Sometimes people get on with one, you know, write-in vote. And it's possible that even with having representatives, some people might not know their representatives, uh, because there's more of them than, say, a town council member. Sometimes people don't know who to go to when they want information about town government. Mayor council, the strengths are a unifying executive authority. And if somebody has a mandate, mandate from the, from the electorate, there can be more rapid and significant change. Some of the weaknesses include the fact that the elected mayor just might not have the professional management skills of a town administrator or somebody who's been trained to provide this executive administrative authority. Council manager, uh, form of government, the general strengths are that you have professional management in the executive branch and a lean and involved and efficient legislative branch. Some of the weaknesses are that the executive is not elected. Yet they still retain a significant amount of authority, even though it's not as much as a mayor. And there can be limited checks on authority. On the other hand, there can be some, you know, all of these forms of government. There are many nuances in between that deal with some of these strengths and weaknesses. So it's not, it's definitely not one size fits all. What is the, can I have the next slide? Just some basic structural differences. People always ask, what will be done differently? One of the primary differences between what we call a city form of government are that town bylaws require attorney general approval, and that can be a lengthy process. City ordinances or what we would call town council, any council form of government. The ordinances, even if they're called bylaws, do not require attorney general approval. And most city boards are appointed rather than elected. The city budget process has very specific procedural requirements when things are done. Deadlines and a streamlined process. And cities do not generally have finance committees to recommend budgets or to approve reserves. That said, there's often written into the process of public participation and a goal-setting and a goal-setting opportunity with public participation that sometimes takes the place of having a finance committee weigh in on these budgets. City, and the last one, in general, city elections where there's a mayor are held in the fall. Town elections are often in the spring. Now, even with, with a town council form of government, we find that a lot of towns that have evolved from a town meeting form of government, um, still hold their elections in the spring. Especially if they choose a three-year term. Because, uh, in general, um, so far, right now, uh, the, the state does not encourage having elections in the fall during the even years where there's state and federal elections. So if you have a three-year election, you pretty much have to have it in the spring. In order to avoid falling during the other election cycles. So, and as I mentioned, we, charters can be written to override some of these differences. There's no one model perfect charter. They're all going to be customized to meet your needs. Is, were there any questions?
On the first one about town bylaws requiring attorney general approval while city council ordinances don't. Do, do city councils, um, what, what about home rule petitions? I know we, we, Nantucket seems to have a lot of home rule petitions at our town meeting. Are they, are they, those are things that still need, I presume, legislative approval. Like, they're still gonna go to the state house, even if you're a town council?
Right, um, I, yes, and, and that would be things such as special acts. And whether the city opts into or out of, you know, government, yes, there are still special acts. Including, you know, including changes to a charter that have to go, um, they actually go to the legislature generally. Usually not through the attorney general's office, often directly to the legislature.
And so if, if a city council or a town council approves some new ordinance, does it go into effect right away? Or is there a sort of a review period or a, you know, sixty-day delay so that if someone wants to appeal it or, or sue or something, they have that chance?
Right, that's usually written right into the charter. Um, that can also be written into the ordinances. There's often a delay and a posting, uh, notice, and then there are, we, we can talk a little bit more, our public participation processes such as referendums. So you may want to wait out the length of time where somebody could, if you have a referendum procedure where somebody could challenge the, you know, challenge whatever was passed.
Have an ordinance that has an effective date sixty days or whatever, written to the ordinance?
Right, and with exceptions for emergencies.
Okay, sorry, I was monopolizing. Any, anybody else have any other questions?
I think, uh, the, from what I recall from Bridgewater, they, they have a FinCom, and they utilize the FinCom. With the legislature, so the town council had their, their way, so. Yeah, you can override.
Absolutely, and, and there may be more of an ad hoc committee that's created to advise and take a second look at the council. There may be, you know, and that's definitely customizable.
Oh, Donna, sorry.
Fine, um, Pat, I wonder, um, and Anthony and Mel, um, there's a lot of material in this. Would you, um, share this with us so we could refer to it?
I, I, I believe that Anthony has already shared it. Um, has, Anthony, have you passed it on already?
Maybe an email issue, Donna, I'll, I'll send you copies after.
It was just today. So I think that, um, I think the chair may have it and can probably share it.
If anybody else didn't get them, um, just let me know.
I just wanted to clarify that, um, I know that the, uh, the finance, so-called finance committee at Bridgewater was discussed. And you might call it a finance committee and it might advise the council, but it doesn't have the same establishment of law as town finance committees do, so just. So even in Bridgewater, you might call it a finance committee, it doesn't have the power of a finance committee as, as one would in Nantucket, for example.
Right, any other questions? All right, back to you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony.
Well, thank you, Pat. Before we, before we, um, uh, kick it back to, uh, the committee. I don't know, uh, Mel, if you want to go through the spreadsheet that you put together with some sort of exemplars in each category?
Sure, um, there is a spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet that, uh, I believe Anthony was, uh, submitted around and, um, it's even a bigger spreadsheet. I think there's a lot of, uh, uh, columns hidden there. We, we work on, um, we compare a lot of, um, structures of government. It just seems to be a useful way to do it, because we're always asked by committees like yourself, well, who does it that way? Or what does Barnstable do? Or what does Gloucester do? Or what have you? So, uh, we're constantly, uh, trying to create these little spreadsheets that, that, uh, compare how communities are formulated. So you'll, you'll see in that spreadsheet, uh, you know, council forms, they all, all the council forms are, are, are the councils are, are pretty much similar, but, um, the size of them, whether they're elected at large or by precinct and another, a number of other factors, we try to lay that out for you. And, um, you know, at some point, you might want to talk to some people in those communities. And say, well, why did you do it this way? Does it work here? We see that another community does it another way. So, uh, really, it's just a, a tool for you all to see how different cities and towns are organized.
I, I was, I was struck by looking at the, at the spreadsheet that, um, in terms of its operating budget, Nantucket is bigger than virtually all the, all the, well, there's only six or seven on here, but Nantucket would be bigger than all of them, so. All righty, thanks, Mel.
So, so sort of the, the, I guess, the, the, in the last sort of half hour that we have together, or, or that the committee has, was to sort of go back to the, um, uh, the worksheet that we have. And, and again, really, this, the whole purpose of this is to sort of prompt discussion. So we've went through the various forms. We're not saying that this has to be the only discussion on the forms, but if you want to take the time to, take some time to look at the problems that we have identified, maybe focus on one and you don't have to write down that one address that doesn't address it, but just items that you may like in, in one form or another that you sort of want to key in on as you move forward. In terms of addressing a prompt, problems that you've identified, uh, perhaps with the, um, voter participation. The logistics of putting on a meeting, you know, obviously assembling nine or eleven people weekly or monthly is vastly simpler than getting together. You know, four or five hundred, whatever the number is of, of registered voters. To get them aware of a town meeting, to get them to show up, to mark that they're there, so on and so forth.
So Anthony, do you think it's worth just, like, we just go around the table and, um, I don't know, people have any, any, um, any reaction in terms of some of what we heard about other, other forms and, um,
I have a reaction.
Kind of how that compares, yeah, well.
Of course I did.
I, I think, I, I heard Anthony, um, inviting us to choose one of the problems that we talked about earlier and run it through the different forms of government. Is that, is that what? Is that the task for now?
That was a suggestion, it really given, it's just to prompt discussion amongst you, the committee, so whatever way you want to do it best. I'll leave it to you, but yeah, I mean, I think one way to, to work this is it to maybe look at the spreadsheet and sort of identify something that really jumped out to you that you wanted to talk about and, and maybe go through that.
Curtis, go ahead.
I just want to go back, um, and remind, um, all of us that we're talking about New England and, um, town meeting. But the literature states that sixty-five percent of the municipalities in the United States, over twenty-five hundred have a council manager form of government. So if you look out of New England, the vast majority have a town council, have a council manager form of government.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd love, I'd love to pick up on what Rachel commented on, um, when we were going around checking on the problems that we've all brought about our current form of government around the, um, well, I was calling it confusion. What was the word you were calling it? The uneducated, the it was hard to get information to the voters so they were informed. I'd love to see. I mean, obviously, that's different when you're not talking about voters, but I'd love to just look at how that sifts through the different forms that we're talking about, or any, any of the other problems.
Just thought Caroline said, which I think is valid, but I do want to point out that we keep talking about you want to get people more information, because that's gonna make them come. It's not. They have a lot of access to information. So I think that's one of my things that I think that they, they can go to meetings after meeting. Everything's open to them and they, they don't participate, so. When we start talking about, like, if we just make them more educated, then they're gonna be better. I think, A, that's a little bit insulting to a voter. And, you know, it's, it's up to them to, to decide what all they want to know. And plenty of smart people don't understand how what's going on at town meeting and educated people, because it is complicated. You know, the town has to cram in so many articles, and then you get to the citizen articles, which as fascinating as they are, a lot of them, you know, are really kind of political theater, to be honest.
And are not even enforceable, even if you pass them.
Including yours, Curtis. We, we passed yours, and we're here, so people do it.
Well, I mean, it certainly strikes me that, you know, council forms, you have a much smaller group of, I mean, at least on the subject of educated legislators, legislators and people who understand the issues of the law or the problem at hand. I mean, it seems to me to be sort of patently obvious that if you only have nine or ten or fifteen people to educate and, and they do it full-time, you would hope that they're better informed, I suppose. Maybe not, but, um, whereas in the open town meeting and the representative town meeting structures, you know, you're, you're still dealing with, um, a fairly large group of people that you can't be sure has taken the time to be, become knowledgeable on a particular issue. And that's certainly something that, you know, personally, I think is an issue with our, our open town meeting.
So does that sort of, so what are you saying, more, there's more, I guess, accountability for those on a council to be educated and to be making an informed vote on a subject versus open town meeting and representative where people are voting, but it's really we don't know how much information they truly reached out and obtained or read, even in representative, they might be.
They read the warrant at town meeting while they're.
So is that like what you're saying? Like, so you're sort of hoping that people are gonna take the personal responsibility to educate themselves and vote accordingly while in a council, you kind of, that's a little bit more transparent if they.
Well, don't you think that if, if I decided I'm gonna run for town council and, you know, try to get elected to a three-year term and, and, um, be willing to take on the responsibilities of that role, I would hope people who would be that proactive, actually run for that office would take it seriously and educate themselves on all the stuff that they've got to decide upon. One of the issues, I mean, I, I think it's one of the glaring issues of our open town meeting is, you know, we A, we only get ten percent of the voters, and B, I would bet eighty percent of the people who show up haven't, as, just what Curtis said, actually haven't looked at the warrant till they sat down in the auditorium. And so there, and there are a lot of complicated issues on that warrant, and we've all seen the crazy debates that happen in terms of, you know, people didn't, uh, don't understand it going in, or get swayed by one or two, one or, uh, one or more of the proponents or oppo- opponents of that particular issue. Um, I think it makes town meeting slow, inefficient, and in some cases infuriating.
Laborious.
No, I agree, I agree with that assessment. I'm just saying, based on what, like, in terms of trying to formulate it, it's almost like with open town meeting or representative town meeting, you're hoping people are taking the responsibility to be engaged and get the information, while with a council, I mean, unless they're literally not listening to what's happening at the meeting, they're getting the information. It's like, you, you can tell that they're being, I think accountability or transparency, I guess, is like key word that keep popping up. So I, I would just think that in terms of that, it's like with the selectmen or select board, excuse me. You know, they're hearing from consultants, they're hearing from the public at their meeting, so when they're voting, you know, they're voting with that information where versus town meeting, you don't know that anybody paid attention to any of those meetings when they're voting. You're hoping that they're voting appropriately. So I think there's a little bit more accountability to be educated.
Yeah, so I was just thinking that the, in, in town meeting, we have the privilege of being representative of our individual voting selves, and it is our responsibility to learn about this stuff, and obviously, people are not doing as good of a job as we want them to do. But if we had a town council, what we're all mostly talking about is, well, it, it would be good because they would be more invested, they might be a little more, uh, professional, they might get paid. They, we would expect them to definitely know more about. Professional, they might get paid, they, we would expect them to definitely know more about what's going on. But then I think about the need for those council members to be representative of. All the voters who are now no longer voting, who are not part of the legislation. And I I have, we haven't really talked about that at all. I wonder. How who how does a town council person inform themselves of what the constituent constituent? Wants and how does that one person who obviously we all have our biases, how does that one person distill down? Their decisions on legislation? And what would that look like on Nantucket? It would be cool to play that out and see what we think about that.
Alright, so what strikes me about the Barnstable meetings, so just watching those. I like the saying amateurs talk tactics and generals talk logistics. So you're in a room full of logistics. In Barnstable. The town administrator is in front of the committee. And the committee with the council is talking to citizens about their issues. And then the logistical part of how we're going to. Solve a problem via ordinance happens right in the. Meeting in the room. So they're talking operations. They're talking about the logistical way they're going to solve the issue right there. That's how they this whole educational process happens. You get to see that in Barnstable. So that's what we're talking about. It's the logistic, you get ensconced in the logistics of government. Does that make sense?
There are plenty of people who discuss some logistics of government here, so I I don't know that. I think that's so different. I mean, we have weekday weekly meetings, people who are interested go, they ask a lot of questions, they get responses within a week. I don't know that that's different. I'm not saying. Don't take that as like.
I'm saying that the legislative and the executive come to a room. And they 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 hash out the logistics of of. Implementing a bylaw. And the ways they're going to execute on the bylaw, which is the which is the point of government. One body enacts, the other body executes.
We're aware of that, Bo. I just don't understand how you think that's different than what's happening when they make a decision at the select board level, let's say.
Because.
Like when they do a licensing.
Because what's happening here is the legislature is spinning off bylaws. Okay, that they're not necessarily going to get enacted or not necessarily going to get executed on.
That's true.
Right?
Some. The the third of the zoning sure do, and the third of the budget stuff that they do, which is, you know, they take up two thirds of town meeting. Which is something that I personally don't like, but.
Right.
They those those have.
The point of it is to execute on a bylaw.
But the citizen articles, is that what you're talking about? That's why.
I'm talking about all things.
No, but what what in what in the budget that gets passed doesn't actually end up.
I'm not talking about budget budget specifically. What I'm talking about is the regulatory stuff. Okay, so the the bylaws that we create or regulations, right? That's all the executive. We create, we create bylaws, or sorry, we we.
The legislative passes.
Passing in the executive.
Is supposed to enforce it, and you're upset that they don't get enforced, certain things.
So what I'm talking about is in the town council system, you basically see those two bodies working congruently. Alright, the in the in the. Open town meeting system, it's not always clear that the things that are getting passed are moving through the enforcement. Right?
Functions happen in different settings while in the council, you're saying it sort of all kind of happens.
It's there because they're negotiating in the room.
I'm sorry to interrupt the conversation, but Donna just hand up for some time.
Uh, thank you. Um, I I think you, um, Bo, maybe you're talking about immediacy. It's at the moment, whereas with the annual town meeting, these warrants are put together months ahead. And it's hard for for people to digest in a couple of days, a hundred and ten articles. That's that's really difficult. That's quite a charge. The other thing is, I was, as we, as you folks were going through the presentation. I was thinking about, you know, where we started. Nantucket was basically years ago in the sixteen hundreds, an isolated island. So, oh, you know, annual town meeting was perfect. You had a bunch of folks who got together. And I don't know how many in those days, but not a lot, and men and women. Some of the guys were off, you know. Wailing, and the ladies were taking care of Petticoat Alley. And so they got together. It was a real neighborhood. Well, fast forward, we're in twenty twenty-four. We've got a huge world, we're part of it, and things happen very quickly, and it seems that. Only ten percent of our voters are making decisions for everybody, no matter what. That's kind of what's going on. So it's very arbitrary. Just a thought, but the historical aspect of what's happened. Thank you.
I have so much to say that I might take up the remaining twenty-two minutes, so please go ahead.
So I I was just gonna say, and and to build up those point a little bit. And kind of my sense of it too, I think one of the things that appeals to council to me is. I see how all of our regulatory boards function, whether it's. The planning board or the CONCON or the board health unit, and when they have an important issue and they discuss it. They have an amazing ability to say, we need more information. We're going to continue this hearing. We're going to talk about it next week. We're going to come back. Town meeting doesn't have that. Town meeting, you're there and you either make a decision or you say, we're going to put it off for a year. Or we have to call a special town meeting, which has its own has its own process, but. To efficiently process an issue, some issues can't wait a year. It can't wait six months or nine months. It needs to be dealt with and to have a system in place to say. We need more information, we need more expertise, we need more knowledge. Let's get it. And let's talk about it next week and the week after, the week after, until we get to the place. Where we have enough to make the best decision possible, and that's just not something that town meeting can do. It's not structured to do that. And I I I think in the world we're at, I mean, we have so many issues where we see this come up. I mean, what is this like? Town meeting number three, where we're going to hash out short-term rentals, maybe again?
That has nothing to do, sorry.
But it's. Is if you have that as a task in front of the council where you have to get to a point of conclusion. You can get to a point of conclusion and then work on it to make it better over time. Instead of just continually having to kick the can down the road and 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 work towards it.
Okay, can I push back a little bit? Because I do, I still want to get to that, what everybody thinks and why. I think it's really important and it's really shaping how I think about it. Short-term rentals, for example, that's something that is not really. Um, the. Well, we've had lots of discussions. That that's come forward through a lot of different ways, right? Through citizens' articles, through a select board, through the short-term work group, you know, that's bubbled up through the citizenry. Right? But when you start talking, but that's, to me, that's not so regulatory because that's a combination of. Of things, that's taxes and, you know, there's a lot in that. But when you talk regulation and you say CONCON, well, CONCON, like, they're going to continue to exist. That's not going to change. So, but or the board of health regulations, I mean, we're still going to have those. I guess, I'm trying to understand from both of you how those things are going to get. More, like, is it because you think if we have an executive form of government, that they're going to get to hire more people?
Can I just respond quickly? I can. Take away my example of short-term rentals. If you have an issue, issue X that comes up, that impacts the community. It can be whatever you want it to be. And the community says, we have to address this issue and determine the best path of action on this issue for the community. How it gets to town meeting, whether it's through the select board or a citizen article, or however it gets there. There's a finite point of action at town meeting where you either have to make a decision. Or to push and say, we're going to come back regardless of the issue. And that timeframe may not be an acceptable timeframe. If you have a council, you can say, we see the issue. We understand the issue. We're going to get as much information as we can, and if we have to push our decision. A week, we'll continue and get more information. If we have to push two weeks, we'll get more information and make that decision. You have much more flexibility in when you get that decision point than what town meeting provides. Where you have a forced deadline, whether it's. Whatever issue you want it to be, where in kind of the example for the regulatory boards is if you have an application in front of you for whatever it is. We need more information on it. We're going to push the decision point. That's really the example I'm making is. You have flexibility in the endpoint that's not governed by. A process that causes that to move substantially or to have to wait substantially to deal with it again. Which we do now.
I mean, I would I would just throw, and I I think short-term rentals is is a perfect example of why the town council government would operate more effectively. I mean, I have to believe, you know, and I agree with everything Jeff just said, I have to believe that. It's complex and is contentious an issue, whether it's turned out to be. The fact that you would keep grinding away at it and whether you put it off a week or whether you put it off three months because you had to, you know, have input from some other group or whatever. It would certainly have been resolved rightly or wrongly faster than we've resolved it so far.
No, I agree with that.
Anyway, sorry.
I agree because it's it's an incremental issue. It's, when you think about it, it has a regulatory issue or regulatory aspect because it's the board health. That's regulating. I mean, there's some.
Yeah, but that's not what's going to drive your vote, but yes, okay.
There's some regulatory.
There is.
But like Jeff was saying, any managerial system has some incrementalism built in. You're going to try and break something. And do something, and it's going to break, and then go, okay, I got to go back. Then you got to do this, then you got to do this over and over. It's iterative. And you're just trying and failing and trying succeeding.
Okay, you got the next, you want the last fifteen minutes?
Twenty minutes.
Good, please.
Sorry, I just, um, not maybe my, well, it doesn't matter if it's my own opinion or not, because. Maybe playing devil's advocate in what you're trying to do with the chart. So some things that I have sort of heard is that not everybody wants to speak at town meeting. But they educate themselves and they know how they want to vote. So there could be a large portion of the population that likes to know that their voice is heard. And the numbers of voting on a major issue like short-term rentals. But maybe they don't have the confidence that their position or that silent voting majority that doesn't want to get up there and voice their opinion. Will be represented in how a council might vote. So a lot of times, people at town meeting are voting based on what will personally impact them. And maybe that's why we have those hot-button issues that sometimes they flood out after. Versus a council who, to me, seems like their job isn't to vote for what will personally benefit them. Their job is to vote for the overall best of the community, and there might be some fear in a lot of people in our community. That even if they're elected, council members won't act without bias. So that's just sort of some of the pushback I've heard about changing from open town meeting to a council. Is what about those people that don't want to stand up or don't want to go to select board or don't want to or a council or something like that? But they do still want to make sure their position is heard. And I I don't know, that kind of goes into the short-term rental thing, I think, since it is so contentious. Some people don't want to put their face to a position on something like that in a public, but they're willing to vote yes or no. And that's what we sometimes see in terms of the ballot as well. Things might pass on town meeting floor, but then they don't pass at the ballot, and so that's also a participation. So I was just trying to kind of add maybe pros or cons, I guess, in your spreadsheet, and I'm sorry, Tom, I'll let you go now.
No, no, uh, okay, so I'm just going to pick a piece of what I have to say because I think we'll we'll be talking a lot more about open town meeting over the next coming meetings. So Joe, something that you said before, which I think is really interesting, I just want to tease out. Is when you referred to a potential town council or city council, whatever council, let's just say, you said full-time. Full-time person, right? And so if you look at a place like Barnstable, they are part-time. And they are paid ten thousand dollars, two hundred, ten thousand, two hundred dollars a year. And to Caroline's point before expanding on on how sort of more on how that functions. I and participation and and how they do the work and how they consider issues. I think this is something we need to majorly think about if if we are truly considering recommending whatever. Writing another charter, another form of government. In Patricia's. Present, uh, presentation on the slides, she was talking about town councils, city councils. And there was an example of them being seven to twenty-four members. So I was like, twenty-four members, that sounds crazy to get a quorum. So I looked it up. It's Newton. They have twenty-four members, sixteen at-large counselors, eight word counselors. And are elected every two years. Now, that's an extreme example. I I, in my opinion, it is, but it looks like they're paid about fourteen thousand dollars a year. And the mayor is is paid a full-time salary. And I think that's something that we need, I can tell you as a select member, and don't feel bad for me because I love this stuff, but as. And it's 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 constantly interesting and I'm learning new things and all the things that that are great about being a select board member. But it is a lot of work. It is so much work that I've had to restructure my full-time job completely. So I can go to Affordable Housing Trust at twelve to almost four P M. Sometimes. A CPC, this this committee, like this and then select board is is half my day. Like, it's good, I like it, but. You to, if you have a town council or a city council or whatever, and they are either full-time or dedicated part-time. Public servants, as to Rachel's point, hopefully doing the people's business without bias, taking into account all the things they need to learn, the myriad of. Taking in town council, meaning SEL, the the lawyers, things and 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 listening to staff. And constituent input and all this stuff takes a lot of time, and I think that if. Think to find those good people and to Caroline's point about who participates, who is going to run and serve in these positions. And making sure they are representative of the community is something we need to think a lot about.
Alright, well. I can have a debate about that, but yeah, hi, Donna.
Yes, you know what? Nantucket's worth it. We have a lot of wonderful, talented, educated people. Who are devoted to our island. And choosing seven or ten or whatever number if if we get to this point. Um, I don't think that's a problem. I think I think it's important to be positive about what we. What our decision will be, and if it's a question of finding qualified candidates. I'm sure we can, and I think we should have faith in in our population about that.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, if I might, I I don't disagree with that. That's that's a hundred percent. I just think it needs to be in our calculus of of how this, the bigger picture of kind of, because any of these forms of government, I think. I think our our friends from the Collin Center would agree here, there are trade-offs to all the forms. There are there are pros and cons, and we need to pick the one that best suits us.
I think that's true about life. There are pros and cons in everything. And hopefully we'll be educated enough to do.
I agree, Tom. I I think that, um, I think that Nantucket has been fortunate to have the dedicated and interested. Select board members that I've witnessed over the last eleven years that I've lived here. I guess the part about it that I, you know, and and I I absolutely know how much work it is for you and the other select board members. I've seen you do it.
Well, income members too. You both know, you were there for nine years.
No, so, yeah, but but I know the conclusion I'm trying to get to is, I would think. As as, you know, the thinking of the universe of select board candidates and and actual winners of those elections. The ability to actually, and I'm I'm assuming you would want to go ahead and be a town councillor going forward, probably. It would probably be the same amount of work. You'd probably make a little more money, not much more, and maybe a little more. But you'd also have the ability to make more decisions and in effect have a more influential role and impact on the island. Than having to wait for some town meeting every twelve months and to deal with all the. Just logistic and administrative complications, you know, all those things would still be, you know. Boiled down into your life as a as a town council instead of a select board member, but you'd be doing everything you you do today and then. And then being able to vote and make the decision yourselves, um, I, I would think. But then, I would think the select board would want.
But, yeah, just to play devil's advocate, then it's, then it's whoever can get five votes, the chair and vice chair have a massive amount of power to do the agenda. And then you're, then you're getting, for better, for worse, or indifferent, you're getting lobbied constantly, so, so. Your professional time bleeds into your personal time.
But that's politics.
Yeah. I, I know, but, but.
No, wait.
Okay, sorry, I've lost, completely lost control of the meeting here, so.
But I think one of the things to point out that I heard when we were listening to the presentation is, I think there are gonna be more executive sessions, actually. Okay, I don't, you guys talk about transparency, it's not necessarily gonna be more transparent there. I, 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 it could be, it depends who you elect, right? You can't really control that through just what you write in the charter. But these big decisions, like, you're gonna buy Western Avenue, that sensitive issue, we're gonna. What we can do with our island home, the big stuff especially, like, there're gonna be more executive sessions, there're gonna be more behind post door meetings. I, I'm actually okay with that personally, and just, I, I don't want us to make it sound like we're doing this and it's all gonna be like, oh, we're gonna hassle everything all the time.
No. We're, we're.
We still have to vote, though.
Yeah, they vote, yeah, they vote now.
Right, so.
Well, there's, there's also gonna be more than five, I think, you know, I would think we're talking nine to eleven, or, but that's a number we're gonna have to debate. Um, I, I just.
And Mr. Chair, if I might, I was just, I'm just trying to bring up some points that we haven't talked about, I, I am not saying, oh, well, this, this negates everything we're talking on.
I, I believe it, I think it's great, I think better, better that we all put our opinions on the table and know where we're all coming from, um. And I think you raise good points, I mean, you're, you're clearly living, so, um. Okay, Donna, I, I wanna, I actually wanna try to sort of wrap up our conversation, Anthony, and sort of, uh, but Donna, go ahead.
Okay, just real quick, um, Tom, it, many people have talked about just moving the select board over. And I agree with Joe, you'll have more responsibility and, um. You will be able to make decisions more quickly, and I just think you'd be terrific. And I, I hope, you know, if we get to that point, I hope you definitely will consider.
You gotta vote.
Thank you, um, Anthony, Pat, and Mel, thank you very much for all of your input and your, your managing the discussion today, um. We will, uh. Clearly, we'll, we'll chat, you know, in our, in our recap session on Monday, sort of figure out, um, uh, kind of next steps. Does anybody, I, I, I have to say, I, I, I'm not quite sure what I would say the, our agenda for our next meeting should be, does anybody have any particular?
Yes.
Words of wisdom?
I would like to invite someone from Barnstable, either the manager or someone to zoom into this group. And talk about it. Um, we've done that with a couple of other things, and we're, we're all, those of us who are familiar with Barnstable. I'm hearing a lot of stuff, I know. I've been to the meetings, I've seen them take public comment for over an hour. And I think we're missing something, so. To let the model that we're referencing have something to say, if we could invite them to speak, I think that would be helpful.
So, everybody, thanks.
Should we also have representative then? Representative town come and speak, if we're supposed to be discussing.
All the way you like.
Senator Julian Sears, District Director Michael, who, who I know a bit, is a representative town meeting member in Falmouth, I could ask him to come.
Because they had, they didn't even make four and one at a rep town meeting, all kinds of things, yeah, well, that'd be a great. There'd be two good options, Falmouth and Barnstable would give us two points of view, uh, uh, locally.
Okay.
Excellent.
Um, that, that actually leads to a related subject, and that is the calendar of our, of our meetings going out through, um. May and June and, and perhaps beyond, um, I think if we stay on our biweekly cycle, the next meeting would be May first. Um, you said something, is that okay, you, something that conflicting with town meeting, or is that?
Yeah, I won't be on that day, but Jeremy.
Well, I, I can't be, I can't be here that day either, um. So I didn't know whether people had flexibility to move the meeting to April twenty fourth, which is a week away. I don't know whether we can get these.
Well, you're, the thing you sent out was April twenty four or May eighth.
Can't do May eighth, cause that's, the town meeting is probably gonna go too nice, I would guess.
Oh, really?
Maybe, maybe, Frank.
Um.
It's possible, but.
And then as a general question, what do people think about? Are we gonna meet during the summer, are we gonna go on hiatus during the summer?
No.
Yes, me.
What about the rest of you? Um, I'm, I'm.
I mean, if you wanna cut back to once a month in the summer, just.
What, I guess what I would ask you then, would you all please look at your calendars and, um. Send me an email if there are any particular bad Wednesdays looking out over the next eight to ten weeks, so that I can set, sort of set a calendar, um.
So the question is the twenty fourth?
The twenty fourth, or the, I can't be here the first, and I can't be here on the twenty ninth of May.
What about the week after town meeting, like, that would be the fifteenth?
Yeah, we can't be here. Oh, May, May's tricky, cause you get, because of town meeting. And we stick around and go to all these meetings, then all of a sudden May rolls around, Tommy's over, and that's when I try to get out of town.
All right, well.
It really dictates, yeah, I mean, more than.
So we should avoid the week of May thirteen. Uh, uh, right after a town meeting and the following week.
You can do twenty ninth, and that's leading into what the world weekend anyway, the twenty ninth.
Um, I'm not, I'm never sure how to pick the right way to do this, with, again, would please, everybody look at their calendars. Pick the Wednesdays you're available between now and the end of June. Um, and then send them to me, and I will rationalize them and try to, if I can't be here, Jeff, you can run the meeting, I'll be here. All right, um. I think that's, I think that's pretty much everything.
Do we need to hear any closing remarks from?
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion, Anthony, uh, Pat, and Mel, do you have any closing remarks you'd like to make, um, this afternoon?
Uh, we don't have any specific closing remarks, uh, again, part of the presentation, and again, this doesn't have to happen immediately, was. Um, the hope that the committee can have this discussion and maybe hone in on, um. You know, start to, start the process, sort of honing in on the specific form you wanna talk about, um, as Pat discussed in her, um, presentation. There can be a lot of nuance, um, to each form and, and the specific ways you implement certain aspects, whether we're talking about things like. Uh, the town council, the, the, uh, manager administrator, there, there's a lot of sort of nuance in how you implement those powers. Um. Um, so that was it, and then if you want some information on, um. Uh, the attendance of the quorum of town council and, and represent them coming, we can provide that in the. Off the top of my head on the town council piece, I'm not aware of any, um. Instances where town council seats went vacant for lack of, of interest of, of candidates. Uh, but we can do that research and give you some, some firm numbers, um, and then I just wanted to just alert you as you're closing in. I don't know if you've done public comment, and I, and I, and I know that it's been a part of your meetings in the past, so just, just a reminder there.
It just, it doesn't look like we have any members of the, oh, I'm sorry. Or isn't, you're not on Zoom.
And, no, I don't have any talent, just great presentation, thanks to, you know, I suppose like, one of the things that Donna has said, like, ten percent of the voters of Nantucket. Make the vote, like, in, attend the town meeting, make the votes for, like, um, but how, like, but isn't the council a smaller percentage making the votes for Nantucket? Am I missing something there?
Well, Tom would argue one way, and I would argue that it actually, it's, it's a hundred percent coverage, because if they're being good politicians, they're trying to. Understand what all of their constituents want.
Right.
I'm, I'm not saying that the select board doesn't do that, Tom.
Yeah, and then I guess the other thing was that, you know, back to the town meetings, you know, a lot of people get educated on the floor, like, when they're there because of the questions.
Right, and, and then they have to make the vote in thirty six, thirty minutes.
Yeah, well.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Anthony, will you please clarify what you, what you were saying about the town council vacancies there?
Oh, I was, um, I, I, I thought that part of the conversation was who was going to run, um, uh, for certain seats. And so I was saying, we can get some numbers, um, sort of election numbers for the different forms. Um, I mean, we say the difference would be, would be representative town meeting versus the council forms, um, and I'm just, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm just not aware of any of. Of any instance where a council seat went vacant for lack of candidates in a particular election. That's not saying it couldn't have happened, I'm just, I can't pick anything out of my mind.
Well, if, if that was in regards to my comments, what, what I meant was in more general, kind of ethereal. Philosophical debate around quality of candidates and the ability to run if you have. Full time job and kids at home, and it's, and if you're not paid. Full, full time, as, as a, as a full time representative, and how's that representative of the wider community? These are wider philosophical questions, I, I didn't mean it literally as opposed, as referring to vacancies.
Okay, um, so, the next time we get together, which will be either April twenty fourth or May first, I guess, or it will may depend on what people's feedback to me is. Curtis, can you, will you take on, seeing if you could find someone from, uh, Barnstable?
All the town manager, he gave me his private number.
Great, and Tom, you, you will, I'll ask one of your, okay, um, and then we're, we're, a couple of us, Jeff and Carol and I will chat with Anthony on Monday. We have sort of a recap, um, try to figure out what other, what directions they may suggest, and I will communicate that back to everybody.
Well, let's catch the date before.
Well, we'll try to do all this stuff as quickly as we can, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move, Mr. Chair.
Caroline, Jack, so, Rachel, Jeff. Curtis. Um, hi. Jill. So, thanks, everybody, Anthony, thanks, everybody.